Please call the rule.
Mr. Green.
Here.
Mr. Stinger.
Here.
Mr. Baker.
Here.
Mr. Russell.
Here.
Mr. Willie and Mr. Englesby are not here. Mr. Benudi.
Here.
Mr. Vidora.
Here.
Mr. Evangelista.
Here.
Mr. Kinsley.
Yes.
Mr. Lightfoot. Mr. Hilsen.
Here.
Mr. Gallant.
Here.
Mr. Sticks.
Here.
Mr. Teague.
Here.
Mr. Van Borden.
Here.
Mr. Wickham.
Here.
Mr. Marshall.
Here.
Mr. Marron.
Here.
President. Declare necessarily active supervisors Englesby, Lightfoot, and Willie this evening. For the minutes, minutes of the preceding session shall be approved without being read unless the reading thereof is called forth by a member of the board. Minutes are available for review in the supervisor's conference committee. Do I have a motion to approve that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Birthday celebrations for this cycle. Unfortunately, they're both in sick bay right now and they're part of the Mass unit. All three of the Natsens members this evening are part of the Mass unit, but Supervisor Peter Englesby, his birthday on April the 4th and on April the 8th Supervisor Willie. So happy birthday to both of them and hopefully they'll feel much better and be with us in their next cycle. I would like to also mention that a number of individuals, myself included, wondering why there's cameras in the back of the room. And these individuals are from FingerLakesOne.com. They will be taping our meetings on a regular cycle. Right now for this evening they'll be on a three-hour delay and moving forward they'll be livestreamed. So everyone should be aware. Reports of county officials at this time it's not on the agenda, but ask our county administrator for a brief update.
Sure. Just wanted to let the board know that the management recruitments continue for Deputy County Administrator and Youth Bureau Director. The application deadline for both positions was March 21st and in each case we received about 15 to 20 resumes. The search teams have met and selected candidates for interview in each case and interviews for each title will take place in the next couple of weeks and after those first round of interviews are completed, appropriate decision made of second interview will be required. There is the possibility that there may be an appointment in either or both cases at the next meeting and if not April 21st, then it's expected to be May 12th.
Thank you. Permit to the floor, grant permission to the floor to the Chairman of the Public Safety Committee Supervisor Bob Green for some introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As with multiple distinction this evening, we give a ceremony and a presentation to take place. It's an accreditation process for the Sheriff's Department, specifically the Civil Division. And I thought it would be appropriate to explain particularly for some of our newer members of the board, this accreditation process and what it involves from the Department of Criminal Justice Services. Before I start that, without ado, I need to introduce Sheriff Chris Farber from Perkimer County and Peter Keel from State Sheriff's Association. He is the Executive Director. And in a moment, we'll have the sheriff come forward with these two gentlemen and receive the accreditation so well earned by all the staff that's here tonight. The accreditation is a progressive and contemporary way of helping police agencies evaluate and improve their overall performance. Provides formal recognition that an organization meets or exceeds general expectations of quality in the field. Accreditation acknowledges the implementation of policies that are conceptually sound and operationally effective. The New York State Program became operational in 1989 and encompasses four principal goals. One, to increase the effectiveness and efficiency of law enforcement agencies utilizing existing personnel, equipment, and facilities to the extent possible. Two, to promote increased cooperation and coordination among law enforcement agencies and other agencies of the criminal justice services. Three, to ensure the appropriate training of law enforcement personnel. And lastly, to promote public confidence in law enforcement agencies. The accreditation program is comprised of a set of standards that were developed to further enhance the capabilities of an agency and is divided into three categories. Standards in the administrative section have provisions for such topics as agency organization, fiscal management, personnel practices, and records management. Training standards encompass basic and in-service instruction as well as training for supervisors and specialized for technical units. Operation standards deal with such critical and ludicrous topics as high-speed pursuits, roadblocks, patrol, and unusual circumstances. The New York State Law Enforcement Agency Accreditation Program was established as a voluntary program that would provide law enforcement agencies with a mechanism to evaluate and improve the overall effectiveness of their agency and the performance of their staff. Accreditation is a formal recognition that an agency's policies and practices meet or exceed the standards established by the council in the areas of administration, training, and operations. And with that, I tell members of Board of Supervisors, Mr. Chairman, would ask that
Sheriff and Sheriff and Executive Director come forward for their presentation.
Thank you Supervisor Green and thank you Chairman Marron, members of the board, and guests. It's my pleasure to be here tonight along with Sheriff Chris Farber, Herkimer County Sheriff, who is the President of the New York State Sheriff's Association. We're here to, on behalf of all the sheriffs of New York, to recognize and honor Sheriff Pabro and the men and women of the Ontario County Sheriff's Office on the occasion of re-accreditation of the Sheriff's Civil Division. Only 26 of the state's 62 counties have been able to achieve accreditation in the civil field, so obviously this is not an easy accomplishment. And this comes on top of accreditation of the jail, the PSAP, court security, and the law enforcement division, which have been achieved through the New York State Sheriff's Association and the New York State Law Enforcement Accreditation Council. And with this accreditation, Sheriff Pabro has every accreditation that's available to his office on a state level. These are all significant achievements which clearly demonstrate the dedication of the board, sheriffs, and the sheriff's office to the excellence of their profession. We have an outstanding sheriff here in Ontario County, as you know, but also you may not know that he is well respected, recognized for excellence in the agency, throughout the state. Citizens of Ontario County and the Board of Supervisors who believe in financial support for the sheriff's office should be very proud of the sheriff and the sheriff's office. And honoring the sheriff and the sheriff's office today, we particularly want to honor the achievements of the civil officers in the police, who to my mind are the unsung heroes in the sheriff's office. Civil officers are responsible for enforcement of the orders and judgments of the civil courts. Without these dedicated men and women to enforce them, those orders and judgments of the civil courts would be mere pieces of paper. Now, everyone knows the dangers and difficulties on road control deputies face every day, but not everyone is aware that the work of a civil deputy can be just as stressful and just as dangerous as that of a criminal or deputy. Too often angry litigants take out their frustration with the civil court system on the deputy who's just doing his or her job, serving and enforcing the orders of the court. Without the dedication and the good work of our civil deputies, the courts of civil justice just could not function. And that is why we devote so much of our time to the sheriff's office and so much of our resources to promoting excellence in sheriff's civil offices through this accreditation program. I know most of you are generally familiar with the concept of accreditation and Supervisor Green did a nice job of outlining the process and the benefits of accreditation. The two things I want to mention in particular that I see kind of undercutting from, coming from our accreditation program, one is it tends to increase the morale in the agency. Your employees and your sheriff's civil office know that measured by this objective standard, they're doing a great job and appreciate that they're being recognized for doing an excellent job. And secondly, I think it's very important because it tends to improve the services to the public and tends to improve the public's perception of the public institutions. And that is why we devote a lot of time and a lot of money to these various accreditation programs of the Sheriff's Association. Civil accreditation is not something available just for the asking. To achieve accreditation requires that the civil office meets a very stringent set of standards which have been developed by experts in the field of civil process. Currently, there are 121 individual components to this accreditation program. To gain accreditation, the sheriff's civil office must submit itself to scrutiny by an outside Board of Assessors who ascertain whether or not the agency meets its many standards. And the Board of Assessors, which have renewed the operation to the Ontario County Sheriff's Civil Office, have found, as usual, that it needs to receive every one of those stories. So congratulations to Sheriff Pabro and the Sheriff Tumal and men and women of the Civil Division and all the men and women of the Ontario County Sheriff's Office for this accomplishment, which we recognize you have done. I want to say that congratulations are also in order for the Board of Supervisors and for the citizens of Ontario County. Because without your moral support and your financial support, this achievement and the outstanding service provided by the sheriff's office to all the citizens of Ontario County in all the areas of the sheriff's responsibility would not be possible. Of course, accreditation does not just happen, it takes a lot of hard work by a lot of people and the entire staff of the Sheriff's Civil Division deserves to be recognized for this. But I particularly want to recognize a couple of individuals who devoted big, go extra time and effort to the many administrative and operational details required in order to demonstrate successfully that the Ontario County Sheriff's Office is most deserving of this recognition tonight. So at this time, I'd ask Sergeant Keith Green to come forward. And President Pabro will present. Sergeant Green with a certificate recognizing this hard-working project.
Thank you, Sergeant. Deputy Alan Rohr. Deborah Pyneham.
We also want to mention Carol Presto Filippo.
Filippo.
Filippo. Who was retired from the agency but was instrumental also in this achievement tonight. So we want to recognize her. At this time, first of all, I want to again thank you Chairman Marron for this opportunity to publicly acknowledge the good work that's being done by your sheriff's office here in Ontario County and again congratulate all the citizens of Ontario County who are in this great sheriff's office and they support it. And at this time, I would ask Sheriff Farber to present.
Sheriff Pabro, everybody. Yeah, you're the senior. Appreciate it.
Again, I want to thank Executive Director Keel, President, and Sheriff Farber for being here tonight and thank all of you for your support in this endeavor as the Executive Director points out, for five stated accreditations plus a standalone medical accreditation from the National Correction, Commission on Correctional Healthcare for our jail. We all need the support and backing to you. And I want to again thank the tremendous staff that provided the guidance and worked us through this program. Sergeant Green, Deputy Rohr, Deborah Pyneham. Want to introduce Susan Hughes. She is our newest employee in the Civil Division, replacing Carol Presto Filippo, who retired shortly after the accreditation process completed. Also want to thank Chief Deputy Store for his guidance and support of this project as it was completed. Again, thank all of you.
I'd just like to congratulate Sheriff Pabro and his staff. This is a huge accomplishment. It's not only huge to get it, but to maintain it. It's a huge benefit to the county and its taxpayers and I'd like to congratulate you and thank you very much for supporting my fellow sheriff in his endeavors and the staff of the sheriff's office. It's very important to get this and it's important to keep. Also, I'd say it's a pleasure to be here because I'm standing in front of a Board of Supervisors. I don't have to answer any questions. Why I need a new jail. And I mean, though it wasn't customary for the President to show up to these events, but Phil was kind of surprised when I showed up. It wasn't, I guess it's not customary. It's a...
You're the, Peter has been here many times.
Peter had been.
But I think you're the first president of the association.
Well, it's very important that we support each other, sheriffs. You know the danger that our law enforcement officers are facing on a daily basis, especially, you know, from last year to this year. And it's important for us to support each other as a whole, through the whole state, to make things better for our taxpayers of every county and we watch out for each other. You know, we're all in this together and we need to be. We face a lot of issues and Phil's been a great guy. When I became sheriff, he was one of the first guys to call me up, send me a card, and say anything you need, we'll support you and we'll help you. So you got a great sheriff here. I would just kidnap and lout about one of the sheriff. Thank you very much for the support of the office and sheriff. We recognize that and really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff Farber, thank you. Appreciate you coming here. And Executive Director Keel, we never grow tired of your business.
Thank you.
Any other supervisor requesting approval to the floor this evening? Supervisor Teague.
I would just like to take a minute to invite everybody if you can tomorrow Saturday morning, 10:00 AM till noon, we have a ribbon cutting Burnham Highway for sure. So anybody that would like to come, coffee, dawn, if you'd like to take a tour of the building. Have a good day.
Congratulations to you Supervisor. Are there any other supervisor requesting approvals of the floor? Communications and reports are on file in the Board of Supervisor's office. Are there any reports of special committees? Reports of standing committees? I have a couple lined up and I would like to certainly offer to the agent the Community Champions Event for the Meals on Wheels program. I know certainly many supervisors have daytime obligations, so they can't participate in the Meals on Wheels, but I commend those supervisors that had that opportunity. Hopefully find it to be very beneficial. As well as recently the Choose Health Award Partnership for Ontario County and Ronnie Ross was the recipient on behalf of partnership for Ontario County. This was done at the recent Safety Awards Dinner. In addition, it was the 53rd Annual Safety Awards Dinner and I want to thank Supervisor Baker and Supervisor Green for attending. And in addition, I want to recognize Supervisor Baker's son, James Baker, a member of the department, and is, was a recipient of a Heart Starter War. So congratulations to you.
Congratulations.
Okay, moving to resolutions.
Number 21, authorizing submission of a permit variance application to renew the existing Part 60 permit for the Ontario County landfill.
Mr. Chairman, how for this resolution, who reports adoption? Chairman, on second resolution. Resolution has been moved in second as Supervisor Russell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. As a very brief background on what this variance, what this variance means, how it will be enacted, and what will be the benefit of the variance being acted on favorably by the D E C. As we all know, Ontario County holds the 360 permit for the landfill. And as such, we are the official body that will ask for variance extended to D E C. Casella, our operator, has asked us to submit this variance, which will in essence take the construction of the new cell, which the requirements right now are digging 10 feet into the bedrock, then supplying a layer of fill before the membrane is placed on top. This variance is asking the D E C to allow Casella to place, to dig only five feet into the bedrock, replace fill, and add membrane. I know there's been some questions as to whether this will increase the volume of waste when you're doing the landfill. It certainly will not. All it will do is just reduce the amount of bedrock that needs to be taken out. That's what this variance will do if enacted by D E C. If passed, it will go to D E C, D E C will act on it. Couple of things to note, the D E C is present for this variance to be granted, D E C has granted to other landfills in the past. And indeed, the D E C right now is working on their regulations to change the 360 permit to make five-foot digging into bedrock the standard as opposed to 10. So they're in the process of finishing up their due diligence, at which point it's on the period that it will be acted on. But as of right now, we need to act upon this variance, we need to apply for variance to have D E C act on it. There are some benefits to acting favorably on this variance on our behalf and also on Casella's behalf. Casella has estimated that they will have a reduction in their construction costs of about $1.8 million. That is a significant amount of money. As we understand, with the late granting of the D E C to the 360 permit, they're behind on their construction schedule and they can certainly use any savings that they can get out of their construction. It also has a benefit to the environmental quality of Ontario County. There's thousands of gallons of diesel fuel that won't be consumed by having to dig into bedrock. That reduces our carbon footprint. There's a reduction in the amount of rock and the fill that needs to be taken off-site, so that will reduce the truck load, will also reduce the inconvenience to the neighbors and also reduce wear and tear of the road. So those are the, that's the reason why we're looking at the variance and the benefits that come. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Evangelista.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you Supervisor Russell. As many of you know, I voted no in committee for this variance or to even bring it before the D E C. And I think a couple of points that Rich first started out with are key to the whole discussion. An emphasis on the county owns the land, the county owns the permit, and the renter or the vendor is Casella. And Casella is realizing quite a benefit, as Rich talked about and the resolution talks about, of $1.8 million. And I think it's important to mention that during the discussion in committee and in some of the documents that we were reading, there was a general inference that the county would be compensated in really two areas. A second, it has its wayset, and a contribution made to the solid waste master plan, all of which, as our constituents and as stewards of the county, we could use. My take from that meeting was that there wasn't any sort of agreement by the Casella representative to essentially say, yeah, we're going to put that new amendment and we're going to spell it out. Other supervisors had different thoughts in terms of the compensation, but at the very least, I thought it was important that we had something definitive to say, from Casella, to say this, that we are essentially sharing in some way with the cost avoidance of $1.8 million. So I think that's important that we kind of vet that out. The other thing is, part of the discussion, I was hearing some different rationale in terms of why we shouldn't expect Casella to pass on any sort of savings to Ontario County. And supervisors that were there can speak for themselves, but I just want to remind everybody that in 2003, if you were around in 2003, and I know some of you were here when we did the deal with Casella, we had multiple offers. And in fact, it was many years before 2003 that there was an opportunity to privatize the landfill. And the board turned back a couple of different times, a couple of different years, and we said, no, it's not the right deal for us, it doesn't make sense for us, we're not going to do it. So in 2003, this board made a commitment to transfer the operations to Casella. And of course, we still own the permit and of course, we have to do due diligence when it comes to the larger amount of concerns and also, as the case here, the economic concerns. So this is really, for lack of a better word, a term of business decision. And I think it's important that we are accountable to our constituents, just as Casella ultimately has to be accountable to their stockholders and to Ontario County and to the D E C. So I'm just looking for some sort, and I thought we were going to have something, I know Tom is not here, I'm looking, in order for me to support this at this point, some sort of definitive answer in terms of what Casella will have in say, Ontario County. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I didn't mean to pre-up the supervisor's floor, but I believe that County Administrator Kraus can answer some of Supervisor Evangelista's questions and supplies some information. Can you continue the conversation?
I think what I can share are some examples of efforts on the part of Casella to work in this partnership with us. And I know in recent activities around some of the recycling goals in the Solid Waste Management Plan, that we have had offers of assistance from them. So Supervisor Russell had encouraged us to schedule a meeting with Casella representatives with regard to our recycling efforts. And that meeting went very well and in three areas, they were able to offer us additional consulting services or informational services. One area was through their Vice President of Recycling. They offered us some recycling consulting services as well as comparability information that might generate some other ideas for activities that we could have here in Ontario County. Also, they had represented there from their hauling division and there was some reporting that became apparent that was not available to us or had not been available to us, we hadn't seen yet. And they were more than willing to share that data from their hauling division to give us some better identification of the solid waste that is being picked up by the hauling division as well as going to the Ontario County landfill. And then lastly, it was kind of almost a after-meeting discussion, it was offered to us, they do have a marketing division with some employees that would be able to give us some advice or some ideas to enhance our website. So I guess what I can offer is that certainly there's some consulting services, if you will, and then there's some value-added services that certainly are apparent in the conversations we're having with them. I was just talking with our Director of Human Resources Denise Morley ahead of this meeting. She was unaware of the issue coming before you tonight and she was saying how she met with Jim Snyder from the recycling facility today. Perhaps she received the email that went out to all county mailboxes this week with regard to eco-heroes in our workplace. We're soliciting interested employees to help us with the recycling efforts that are in our solid waste goals for this year and this contract we have with Casella to enhance recycling here at the county. And Jim was very enthusiastic, willing to help us any way that Casella could with this project, admittedly, you know, a smaller project than some of the other ones in the plant, but offered to have the employees who are interested and sign up for that program to go out to the recycling facility, see the facility, have that background and base of information for what happens here at the county. Also, Casella through Jim willing to come here and offer any kind of training to those folks or I presume perhaps even offer, you know, lunch and learn programs for interested employees so that we can enhance our efforts in recycling and we're hoping to go the extra mile with those eco-heroes to sustainability projects as well. So just some examples, obviously not a whole program or a whole list, as discussed at the EWC meeting, but just some examples for your consideration.
Supervisor Dorff. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if you know, I've been quite an angel since I've been here. Anything that came up about Casella, I always would have known. I always argued on the floor. But many times, as you also know, I was told on this floor, maybe not in this building, but on this floor, that Casella is a partner, and we have to do this because it's a partner. I want to know where our partner is now. In the application for the variance, Casella said with this additional money, they're saving $1.8 million, with the additional money, they can help the county. C A I, it didn't say they will, and it didn't say how much, it said they can. So at the environmental quality meeting, which I was at, one of the supervisors tried to pin him down, not Casella, the one that represents that, and straight out asked him, are you going to give us money out of this $1.8 million? He said flat, no. So all this time, he's our partner, doesn't want us to share in this $1.8 million. And I've been told he's our partner, where's our partner now? I'm not going to vote for this because I want to know exactly, you know, there's been some talks going on an hour after the fact, but I want to know exactly what he's going to do for us. How much, if he's going to give us anything, exactly what he's going to do. He needs this variance, and I know he's under herding, and he always wants us to do pumphers, which this board has always granted, minus one vote. But for that reason, I'm voting no.
Any other discussion? Supervisor Vanou?
Thank you. I wanted to share a couple of things that we got in the E Q committee meeting. There's an excerpt that we received of a conference call from Mr. Casella talking to his investors. And he talks about a couple of things, but he gets to the Ontario County landfill and says, you know, it was a tough year because we were getting to the end of capacity, and we had to limit our intake of high-value special waste. But things are coming up, we got our, he says that the county got the expansion, got its final permit for 15.7 million cubic yard expansion. So I asked at this meeting, what is special waste, high-value special waste? Well, what it is, is it's contaminated soil, asbestos, sludge, things like that, which obviously they must have got more money for because he's happy to report to his investors, we're going to start taking more of this in. We have had issues at the landfill with contaminated soil. You may remember a year or two ago, one of our employees had been taken to the hospital because of fumes from contaminated soil from a contaminated site in Utica that was brought up here, thousands of tons of it were spread on the landfill. Just recently, we had another incident that was reported to us, contaminated soil just last week brought to the landfill, found to have, again, employees overcome by odor. This was tested and found to have excessive levels of benzene. You can Google benzene, B E N Z E N E, it's a powerful carcinogen, very small amounts of it are dangerous to health. It's already been covered over and most likely will remain in the landfill. I bring these points up because that landfill is going to be there essentially forever. Will be around for five, 10 years, who knows what, but other people in this county will be, that pile will be there, it'll grow, it'll double in size in the next 12 years, and then it'll be there 50 years, 100 years. So the decisions that we make are going to affect people that aren't here right now. I also asked at that meeting, is there some, do we have an independent engineer or somebody telling us that this switch, now this idea is that the landfill liner, then there's 10 feet, that's what the regulation says, before bedrock. That's to create in the event of a landfill liner failure, it's got to get down 10, got to go through 10 feet to get to bedrock and flow and get the water, leachate or whatever's in that landfill. So we're going to reduce it by half, is what the proposal is here. I said, what's, where is there some independent engineering or some kind of opinion that that's not going to be a problem for people in the future? Actually, Tom Harvey, who was there, said he had something, the Casella sign, and he would get it to me, and I know he's ill tonight, I never received it. Marion Kraus pointed it out to me, she got him on the phone and highlighted a section that we already had at the meeting. So he was talking to me about something else, or at least that was the impression I got. Apparently, Casella, or Barden, Le Judas, Casella's engineers put this variance application together, and there's a highlighted paragraph that basically says this, this variance will not result in significant adverse impacts upon the environment, and that the reduction of the bedrock separation will not reduce the effectiveness or longevity of the landfill liner or containment system in any way. So they're basically saying it's not going to affect the liner, but they're not talking about the difference between 10 and 5 feet. Now, they do go on to say that we were going to put special soils and all that in there, and that might compensate. But where I stand, and then I have to agree with both what Supervisor Vangelis and the Dor set about, the presentation at our meeting, here's what they say. The variance is going to save $1.8 million to Casella. These savings, I'm quoting, represent additional funds that Casella can use toward their efforts to assist Ontario County in implementation of various programs identified in their recently updated solid waste management plan. These include the costs associated with household hazard waste collection events and recycling programs. For 2016, Casella's proposing to sponsor a second H H W collection event for county residents. So I'm sitting there, I read that, and I asked this Casella's representative, well, that sounds like you're going to pay for our second event, and maybe a third, you know, what are you going to do? And he basically said, no, we're not going to do that. So this, which is in the application, is basically false. So they're saying to the D E C that they want to send this to, we're going to save $1.8 million, and we're going to use some of it for the county, but there in the meeting, he told me, no, we're not. By the way, they're already obligated by contract to pay for one and half of the second, which is all they're doing, they're not offering us a cent more. So the whole thing, I can't support it. I would have to see an independent engineer say that this is not going to compromise the integrity of the landfill 50 or 100 years from now. And I also think that it was misleading, they're not offering us any of this, so I'm going to vote no.
Any other discussion? Russell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to take issue with Supervisor Vanou's comment about the recent contaminated soil with benzene in it, which showed up at the landfill. The D E C has pointed its finger directly at National Grid, National Grid was the company that put it on trucks, sent it to the landfill, and right now, the D E C is going to have to National Grid for recognizing that. But more importantly, that, when the issue was discovered, that soil was set aside, it was not buried, it was set aside, and it will be taken care of in a different fashion. That's the understanding that I have at this point. A couple other issues that Supervisor Vanou raised, high-value waste, high-value waste, yes, as described by Mark, is such things as asbestos and other materials that cost more with the tipping scale. And these are permitted in the Ontario County landfill, but always have been, and so therefore they're high value to Casella, but they're also permitted in the landfill. And in terms of the second hazardous material drop-off, yes, Casella is paying for half of it, we're working with them right now to get confirmation that indeed, they will pick up the half of the second drop-off. So we're just waiting for confirmation on it, in writing to be able to verify if that's the case. Unfortunately, I think the Casella representative in the E Q meeting spoke to me out of frustration or simply just didn't understand the value of the question.
Supervisor Holley?
Chairman, thank you. I just picked up Dom's packet from the E Q C meeting. I wanted to read what the Casella representative had to say to have a better understanding. But actually, it's not what the representative had to say, it's actually a part of the application, and the application is being made on behalf of Ontario County. And if it's not accurate, I think at the very least, it should be corrected before it's submitted in our name to the D E C. As far as disturbing the bedrock, I think, Mark, that you have a valid point, that we should be looking for an independent specialist in this area to say whether or not this is a good thing to do or a bad thing to do for the environment, whether it's recommended or not. However, that said, I also believe that's part of the role of the D E C, and that don't make any evaluation and determination on whether this is the right thing to do or the wrong thing to do. As far as having confirmation from Casella on whether or not they're going to pay for that second half of the H H W day, I think we should have that before we grant this. I actually think it's part of their application, and that while I appreciate these consulting services they're offering, I think something more tangible like the second household hazardous waste collection day is definitely something that they should offer. And I think when we're talking about numbers like $1.8 million, that's a huge sum, and if we're going to say that, well, Casella is helping us out with consulting services, we should have some number to attach to those consulting services. So we're comparing facts and figures, and I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Supervisor Singer?
I just want to bring up a couple of points. As all of us know, or any of us that have filled in grant applications or applications for any type of thing, a lot of times, a lot of information, they've put this savings on based on the trucking costs and the fill costs and everything onto that. The other thing, the other part of the equation is, is we're so far behind because the D E C approval came so late, I'm sure a lot of those cost savings are going to be beaten up with overtime for them to try to get back into on schedule to have themselves built. I mean, that's just business sense, having, you know, involved in advising businesses and stuff, that's going to happen. One of the other things that I brought up at the E Q C meeting that wasn't brought up here, during the course of the application for the expansion permit, it was also, we ran into an issue with the cap from phase one. We had received a grant for that when we disturbed that cap, we ended up having to pay that grant back, and I believe along with some penalty and interest on it. And Casella came forward, and they actually paid part of that, partnered with us, that keeps coming up here, and paid part of that fine when that was entirely on our dime, in our mistake and not knowing the, all the parts of that when that cap was put on there, and we accepted those monies. And the point that Pam brought up, Supervisor Holley brought up, as far as an independent evaluation on changing from the 10-foot to the 5-foot, I'm sure the D E C is having an awful lot going on with evaluating that already because they're looking at changing it into their regulations. And any of you that have worked with the D E C, and I have because I've got so much state land and D E C land in my town, they're going to make sure it's okay before they're going to grant us for that. I'm sure they've been looking at this for a number of years before they even got to this point and even granted the first one. And let's see, where was the last thing? I think that, you know, and the rock is going down into the bedrock in that fill, and one of the things that keeps being brought up at our committee meetings is the truck traffic. By reducing the amount of truck that's going, of truck traffic that's going out with rock in it, coming back with fill in it, is going to be reduced significantly during the construction costs. So with that all being said, and to try to keep this going so that we all don't end up county-wide with an issue with space, I'm going to vote for this.
Let's go to Supervisor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. First of all, I'd like to say that I'm very disappointed. This resolution is very important to Casella. Where are they? Where are they? I've got questions that I need answered, maybe someone can answer for me here. First of all, when they applied for the 360 permit, why didn't they apply for this very incidentally? Supervisor Russell stated that this is not real common, but it's been done before. Why won't their agents, not the ball here, have applied for this 5-foot instead of 10-foot when they applied for the 360? Kind of a Johnny come lately to me. Throws up a red flag. Second of all, $1.8 million. Supervisor Vangelis has mentioned a couple of perks that we'd like to see, and I'd like to know by that $1.8 million, how much that would represent.
Supervisor Holley?
I just wanted to comment on the D E C and the fact that they're considering, or they're working on their Part 360, which are the solid waste regulations. I worked in the waste industry for nine years, and when I started in, I don't even remember the year, the early 2000s, guess what the D E C was doing? They were working on their Part 360 regulations. Just because the D E C says they're working or they're considering on revising this, I'm not sure, do we know where that is? Is it in a draft format, or is it in initial discussion stages? This change, for all we know, may never occur. So I don't think we should assume because someone at the D E C says they're talking about it, that it means that they're actually going to make this change. Thank you.
Supervisor Kim? I just have a clarification question and comment in relation to the way the resolution is worded. It's indicating renewal of the Part 360 permit, and I'm not aware that that actually needs to be renewed. And it references a variance to that permit. So I think those are two different things. We need to be extremely careful of whether we're voting for a variance to a permit that's already been granted, or whether we're looking at a new permit and renewing it with a variance if it's granted and how it's attached to it.
I guess, at this point, it seems like there are more questions than there are answers, and I'd like to suggest that we table this. But to Supervisor Singer's point, this is a time-sensitive issue, so I don't know how this board would feel or the chairman would feel about scheduling a special meeting to maybe get some answers and to move on this, but that would be my recommendation.
Point of order. Yes, sir. So you are requesting that this be laid over?
No, I didn't use those words. That we consider tableing it to a later date in order to get some answers to the questions. I mean, I think you had at least three or four supervisors raise questions that really weren't answered or addressed.
Chairman? Okay, Supervisor.
Yes, I would just say if the supervisor wants to table it, make the motion, get a second, we'll take the vote.
I'll make the motion that we table this resolution. Do you want me to state a date?
No, tabling a motion puts it off the board, takes it off at a later time based on vote. It can come up three meetings from now, two meetings from now, or never.
Supervisor Vador?
I'll say.
Supervisor Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not speaking to the resolution before us, other than to the motion to table. I would urge the board not to table it. If there is a desire to delay, then I would urge that you vote down table and it merely be laid over. To table the motion, if it were successful, will require a vote from this board to bring it back up at some undetermined time, if ever brought back up again. It does not necessarily guarantee that some sort of action is going to happen to it. So I would urge that we do not table it, but if there is a desire to delay to get some answers, that a member of the board might vote, they will, as I agree.
I guess I have a question on that, because maybe I don't understand the difference. I thought a table, especially if you table to a specific date, would require an action, whereas Supervisor Baker pointed out, a layover could mean that this never comes up again, or?
A layover would, you'd have to call it a special meeting, and then next round. A layover would, you'd have to call it a special meeting and then next round, cycle or before then, either the next cycle or before then.
Layover is the next meeting and the board has to take action with it, period. Tabling of it requires a majority or two-thirds of the nation, which voted the board to bring it back up. It doesn't mean at the next meeting, we can be never.
So that's what I was looking for, for it to be brought up as quickly as possible so that we're not delaying getting it arranged.
Then you want to lay it over. And a layover doesn't require a vote, any member of the board can just ask for a layover at any rate.
So we have a offer to table, a second to offer, comments by Supervisor Baker, any other comments? We're voting on tableing this resolution. Is your discussion on the table? Yes, sir.
I'd like to withdraw the table.
Okay, that's how I was going to suggest. It's slightly easier.
You guys are trying to say it first.
And you want to offer, you, you want to ask, delay it over then?
Yes. I would make the most of my request to lay over.
Chairman Russell, do you have any further discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think in the benefit of the board, as long as we're in the discussion mode, if we stay in the discussion mode, we get all of the questions that we need, we get the answer on the table. I do have a couple of answers to Supervisor Gallohan, wondering why Casella is not here. I'll take that on myself, Jeff, and say that when Tom was not able to make it, I thought it best not to bring Casella in without Tom to be here to work with him because Tom is very much the conduit from Casella to this board. So if he was not able to make it, is it probably best not to have Casella here? I'll take that responsibility. In terms of language, if the DEC writes, Part 360 writes, as I understand it from Tom, already, that language has already been inserted, it's just, they, they need to finalize their changes before the comment period. So the language is there, what Tom tells me. And in terms of putting a dollar value on, on where we're going to get a benefit from this $1.8 million, it's, it's not cash. What, what we've been talking with Casella about, it's not necessarily cash, it's, it's time and talent. Very hard to put a cash amount on time and talent. It's open-ended, it's, to my mind, it's done when the project is done. And we don't have a full suite of services worked out with Casella. So it's really hard to put a dollar amount on it at this point. If we did, it would be an artificial dollar amount and Casella could tell us at any time, let me get you a dollar. I'd rather work towards finding a suite of services with a program-based approach to get the job done right in terms of implementing the solid waste management plan and also helping us with our recycling issues.
Point of words, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Excuse me, I believe when the motion's been over and ceased the session, I wish you had your judgment at this point. I think there could be limited debate in this.
Supervisor Russell just wanted to get all the questions together. If anybody has any other questions to be asked, sorry if they've been brought up.
Just to break counsel for the legal opinion, would you continue?
Supervisor. Limited debate may continue at the discretion of the chair. Thank you. Supervisor Van Worf.
Supervisor Russell, I would just be curious to know what percentage of the overall budget does that 1.8, the construction budget, does that 1.8 million represent? And also, we'd just like to, to mention, the initial permitting process had significant delays from the DEC's perspective. Is there any realistic expectation that the variance would be a more expeditious process? Or are they going to continue to face delays waiting on the DEC's variance?
Thank you. You don't have to answer it, I'm trying to get all the questions now because what I'm pursuing is, you need us probably, if we're having a special meeting, you're going to have a special EQ meeting, as well, unless you're waiting for full cycles. Supervisor Vador. I'm, excuse me, Manuti.
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that came up. When I, I'm not blaming Casella for the benzene contaminated soil, who's, how it got there, I assume they didn't know it was there. The point is, it's there and lots of stuff like that are there. But I think the administrator can verify that. The last thing I saw from Administrator Kraus was that it appeared the DEC, the contaminated soil with benzene is covered over and they were leaning towards leaving it in place.
It currently is cordoned off and covered and then there was still a determination yet to be made exactly, would it be just left there or spread? So I don't think we have the final answer on that, but it's in a cordon document, I understand it.
And the last thing I wanted to just clarify was that the, we passed a resolution at this board a few months ago granting a contract to Casella to do our own common waste part. Part of that contract included an extra sum, we didn't take the lowest bidder, we took Casella and their bid was eight or 12,000 more, and it was for extra services like helping us with recycling and whatnot. So I think some of the things that the administrator was pointing out are likely them providing those services for which we are paying now. But, and I'm not saying that they don't cooperate and aren't helpful at, at times as well.
Supervisor Evangelista.
Thank you. And I think this, it's not really to be discussed, not a discussion point, but this is, I think in terms of whether or not we can get a little more clarity in terms of the resolution the next time it's brought up, I'm still for offering some sort of amendment because if you read the resolution, despite the fact that our county administrator talked about some of these in-kind services, which are great, I think they still need to be included in the document. And then I also, I'm adamant that we need to put in the resolution, in an amendment form, the second household hazardous waste saving paid by them and a definitive contribution to the County Solid Waste Master Plan. I'm not here to say we need to go 50/50 on this deal, but I think we need to have some new tangible items included in the resolution spelled out so that when we, you know, four or five months from now, we've got some sort of contract that says this is what is owed us. So I'm just hoping that maybe we, now and when we meet again, some communication with Casella can be brought in. It's difficult to have a, an amendment now for those items when we don't have any confirmation that they would agree to those things.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Can I, can I make one comment?
Yes, sir. I've sat here and listened to a lot of this and I don't have a whole lot of confidence in the DEC, I'm sorry. I dealt with them on different water projects. We had spent $4,500 for creating five barrels on Northern Hill Road. How about their project, it cost us $4,500 for this study. And here's an issue that they can't seem to get together, a millions of dollars project. And I, and I don't know what the, all the holdup is and all that, but I have concerns and I've got to agree with, if you need a supervisor here, that I think we need, and I would say, affirm to look at this. Is that separation between the liner and the concrete, or the bedrock, is there an extraction system underneath that to get anything that settles out? Is that what that, or is that just a cushion for the liner? I, I got some questions on that, so I'm glad we're, I'm glad we're laying this show through. Supervisor Hall.
So I just looked up on the New York State DEC's website, they proposed revised 360 regulations, and I haven't read this, but this is what it says about the bedrock separation, section 363-6.4. A minimum of 10 feet of vertical separation is required between bedrock and the base of the constructed liner at all points along the liner system, except as provided in paragraph This requirement may be reduced to 5-foot separations to bedrock with department approval if the soil, either natural or backfill, has a maximum hydro conductivity of 1 times 10 to the 6 centimeters per second. Regardless of the separation allowed, the material between the base of the constructed liner and bedrock is subject to department approval. So there is some mention in the draft regulations about the change, but it's, the first sentence says 10-foot is required unless the department approves it.
Supervisor Vador.
In the application, we refer to the 10-foot separation. The objective of the 10-foot separation regulation is to provide material between the liner system and the bedrock to act as a buffer in the event the leachate reaches the double composite liner system. Of course, I was told a long time ago, they don't leak, but this is the case. Physical separation provides resistance to flow before the leachate reaches the bedrock and possibly contaminate the groundwater. So it is very important to have the 10-foot. And I agree with John, I don't trust the DEC.
I think the county administrator has taken enough notes and Supervisor Russell has as well, and we're going to move to Resolution Number 22.
Authorization to accept cash assets of the Western Ontario Local Community Development Corporation, Ontario County Works for its adoption.
Chairman, our office's resolution moved its adoption. Resolution has been moved in seconds, ready for discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is carried.
Number 23, authorization contract with various Ontario County School Districts producing voting machines.
Mr. Chairman, I move for amended this resolution. Each of the supervisors has been given an amended copy of the resolution, the highlighted area specifically is something in the state and the GO committee when drafting this resolution that...
Yeah, a little bit needed second, first amendment, just to be, the chairman has seconded. How do you go on?
Part of what we discussed in GO was that the county administrator and the election commissioners, the county attorney's office, have the ability to enter into these agreements without having to come back to the community for a second time. So I'm fine reviewing this, I just, I ask that this resolved, we added, highlighted, and I would like to offer the amended resolution. I'd like to offer the amendment, I'd like to offer the motion for the amendment.
Is there any discussion on the amended resolution?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the amended resolution? The resolution, on the amendment only, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, amendment is passed. And the resolution as amended, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is carried.
Number 24, reasonable bid for printing of envelopes, letterhead, and folders.
I'd like to offer Resolutions 24 through 28 as a block.
Is there any objection to blocking Resolutions 24 through 28? Hearing no objections.
I offer these amendments to move through.
Chairman, I offer a second. Resolutions have been moved in seconds, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions are approved.
Number 29, fixing date and notice for the public hearing on local law number 2 of Metro of 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution and move for its adoption.
Mr. Chairman, I offer a second. Resolution has been moved in seconds, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is approved.
Number 30, authorization to accept bike only.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no objection, I'd like to block Resolutions 30 through 32.
Is there any objection to blocking Resolutions 30 through 32? Hearing no objections.
I offer this resolution and move for their adoption.
Mr. Chairman, I offer a second. Resolutions have been moved in seconds, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions are approved.
Number 33, authorization contract, Office for the Aging, the Wood Library, Computer Education Program, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution and move for its adoption.
I'll second. Resolution has been moved in seconds, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is approved.
Number 34, authorization to submit, for submission of a grant proposal to the Leeksmas Alge's Road for Communities.
I offer this resolution and move for its adoption.
Resolution has been moved in seconds, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is carried.
Number 35, creation of position, Finance Clerk, 1 Department of Finance.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no objections, I'll lay the flag, 35 through 42.
Is there any objection to blocking Resolution 35 through 42? Hearing no objections.
I offer these resolutions and move for their adoption.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that. Resolutions have been moved in seconds, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions are approved.
Number 43, resolution calling for space funding for update flood dance.
Mr. Chairman, if you can, if you'd like to, this evening, I'd like to block 43 through 45. Is there any objection to blocking Resolution 43 through 45? Hearing no objections. Mr. Chairman, I offer these resolutions and move for their adoption. Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a second. Resolutions have been moved in seconds, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions are carried.
Number 46, appointment to the Ontario County Industrial Development Agency, Supervisor Jeffrey Gallohan.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no objection, I'd like to block 46 through 48. Is there any objection to blocking Resolution 46 through 48? Hearing no objections.
48, I can go on. 47, 6 and 47, I would ask the chairman's commissioners to abstain.
And you're, because you're the recipient of this?
Yes, sir.
I was, I always thought he was asking for a roll call. So hearing no objections.
I offer the resolution and move for their adoption.
Is there any discussion? Supervisor Kim.
On Resolution 48, I would like to ask if Tom Westholme Field be included in notification? I'm happy to have Victor be included, but I think Westholme Field to be included is lost. He represents an editor.
Thank you, Supervisor. I thought he was, I thought you were rejecting the 46 and 47. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions are approved.
Number 49, 2016 Youth Advocate Programs, Inc., tantric youth education program probation part.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no objection, I'd like to block 49 through 59. Is there any objection to blocking Resolution 49 through 59? Hearing no objections. Mr. Chairman, I offer these resolutions and I do move for their adoption. President. I'll give him a second.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Thank you. Resolutions have been moved in seconds, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions are approved.
Number 60, closing of Capital Project 2 of 11, replacement of Old Mill Bridge over Flint Creek, Department of Public Works title.
Mr. Chairman, with the board's permission, I'd like to take Resolution 60 through 74 as a block.
Is there any objection to blocking Resolution 60 through 74? Hearing no objections.
I offer these resolutions and move for their adoption.
Mr. Chairman, I'll give a second. Resolutions have been moved in seconds, is there any discussions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions are approved.
Number 75, Capital Project 1 of 11, approval of paint orders with Blackland Feral Electric Team, 2011, FLC's municipal maintenance project.
Mr. Chairman, with the board's permission, I'd like to take Resolution 75 through 78 as a block.
Is there any objection to blocking Resolution 75 through 78? Hearing no objections.
I offer these resolutions and move for their adoption.
Resolution has been moved in second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions are carried.
Number 79, Capital Project... Number 79, Capital Project 1 of 14, mortis bid and authorization contract with Tranche J Marinachi, 2014, F L C C maintenance effort project.
Chairman, I offer this resolution and move for its adoption.
Chairman, I'll for a second.
Resolution has been moved in seconds, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is carried. Is there any unfinished business to be brought before this board? Supervisor Hilton.
Yes, tomorrow, we have a veterans' court graduation, and the panel that is very excited about this, the second veterans' court, there will be one participant that's graduating. The panel that assists these people that participate in the treatment courts are very excited about this graduation. It's very special for them. Jeremy Marshall, who is head of our Veterans Service Agency, he's going to be one of the speakers there, along with the graduate who's going to speak, and some of the mentors that participate in the veterans' court, as I say, our support staff, our county employees that work in these departments that support these people are very excited about this. And they said it's at 9:00 tomorrow morning in the court, the North courtroom at the courthouse. And Judge Aronson starts very promptly, so you might want to get there two minutes early if you do attend. And they also wanted me to pass on any of you veterans. You will be particularly moved if you would attend and show the support. Thank you.
Is there any other unfinished business before this board? None, any motion to adjourn?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, all those in favor.
Yes, sir.
Were you, were you going to announce the...
I had a date, and this coming Monday, but I need to have a conversation with the county administrator and the chair because it really sounded like there's a lot more work than originally was identified, and we certainly want to have the opportunity for the E Q to back some things out as well.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch on that.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.